Good evening, this is the January, I mean, June 22nd meeting of the zoning board of appeals. First up is the reserve decision which we are going to put off until the next meeting. It's complicated, we wanted to get it right and we just don't have the right wording yet. So you blame that on me, but we're gonna put this off until the next meeting, which is July...
July 13th. July 13th.
July 13th.
So we're gonna adjourn.
Do a air motion, we're adjourning until next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully move appeal number 2023-013 to be adjourned until July 2nd.
2nd.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. Get yours.
Appeal 2023-031 Wesley Krieger, 43 Nautical Drive, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-14-1-33. RA40 zoning, proposed covered front porch, rear sunroom, portion of existing deck to be removed, and three foot by 28 foot rear addition. Applicant requests variances and relief from chapter 301-11 where proposed front yard setback 23.1 feet when 50 feet required, proposed rear yard setback is 29.6 feet when 60 feet required.
Good evening, can I only raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it.
Yes.
Good, state your name and your address.
Wesley Krieger, 43 Nautical Drive, Riverhead, New York.
You have the floor.
I'm requesting relief of the zoning rules because I live in an area with non-conforming properties. And I've been there my whole life and my family's been raised there. We're out of room and I'm applying to get a little more room so I can fit a little bit better.
Sounds good to me. Any questions?
Seems like a pretty straightforward project to me, we went and looked at it.
Okay.
So I don't have any problems, do any of your neighbors have a problem?
No, actually I've spoken to all...
Pull that microphone up to you a little bit better, please.
I've spoken to all my neighbors, yes, and I've also sent them the registered letters.
Well, we'll see if they're here to complain.
Anyone else to be heard on this matter?
I guess not.
All right, this is about Wesley Krieger, not at Nautical Drive.
43 Nautical.
Were you here, how about Phyllis Lane, you're not here for that, are you?
No, I'm not here for you.
Then good.
You got it.
You sit there and be quiet then till we call. Thank you. All right, nobody has any problems, okay, let's have a reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I moved at the appeal of Wesley Krieger, 43 Nautical Drive, tax map number is 600-14-1-33, located in the residence A40 zoning district. The variances are relief from chapter 301-11 where the proposed front yard setback is 23.1 feet when the 50 foot is, where 50 foot is required. Proposed rear yard setback is 29.6 feet where the 60 feet is required. Be approved in accordance with the applications and sketches and amendments thereto, if any, filed with the building inspector.
2nd.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So your appeal's been granted?
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you very much.
Say hello to my friends across the street.
Take care.
Okay, appeal 2023-032 1264 West Main Street LLC, 1264 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-120-2-2, RAC zoning, proposed internally illuminated wall sign, applicant requests variances and our relief from chapter 301-254G3, internal sign illumination not permitted.
Step up to the plate. Pull that microphone up to you a little bit too, please.
Hi, my name is Kyle Dolder.
Hold on now, hold on, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so I'll be going.
I do.
Now you state your name and your address.
Kyle Dolder, I live at 1259 West Main Street, directly across the street from this business. D-O-L-D-E-R. I only just received this certified letter in mail, registered letter in mail.
We're a little ahead of the game, but go ahead. I'll tell you what, let them, let them get up first and state their case and then...
Got you, I didn't know how this worked.
We'll take you up next.
You got it.
That's okay, thank you. Let's have the applicant step up to the plate.
He was here earlier.
All right, back to the plate.
That's you, just stand right here. You're the applicant, right?
Obviously. But we're gonna sway in anyway. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your name and your address.
My name's Jeff Beecher, I'm with Your Image Group, 85 Avenue, K., Newark, New Jersey.
Can you pull the mic up a little bit?
Sorry.
Probably your last name.
Last name B-E-E-C-H-E-R.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Okay, basically, we have an existing sign that's, that's there, that's capable of being lighted, it's a very busy street and, you know, the cars move quickly and traffic, first time I came here, I passed the place, you know, people have a hard time seeing it and being able to light it would just make it a little bit better for people to ID the location. And, you know, it's already there and it's capable of being lighted.
What are your business hours?
The business hours? I'm, I believe their posted business hours are eight to five, but they have people there from, you know, seven to six. I mean, I'm in the printing business and I'm here.
So, no, that's fine.
My, my hours are nine to five.
Does the light need to be on at night?
I'm sorry?
Does the light need to be on at night when there's no business taking place?
Well, the, the light would need to be on in the evening, yeah, I mean...
Well, what's evening?
Eight, eight months out of the year, you're, you're...
Okay, so would they be on only when business hours occur?
Yeah.
And what's the latest you stay open to?
Well, there, there are usually people there, um, six, seven o'clock.
Okay, so we can turn the lights off after that?
Well, they, they can put it on a timer, sure.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
Okay.
I think this guy wants to talk, he's jumping at the, he's biting, chomping at the bit.
We've already sworn you in, just state your name and your address.
Yes, Kyle Dolder, once again, I do live right across the street. I can show you pictures of my house here. Is this on? Yeah, okay, there you go. Where this sign would be, it's directly facing my house, yes. I understand, he's not gonna see you from Jersey, Mr. Beecher, right? They do close at four o'clock, okay? They are set back from the road, they just opened business about 10 months or so ago. Their competitor on Cromer Avenue does not have an illuminated sign there, site one. You have three, at least three former employees from there in that business now and you have quite a bit of traffic going in there, it's a nice business, I grant it, but I don't need to be seeing a red sign facing my house all night, okay? I have a hard time sleeping with the cable box on. I don't know if anybody hears a Seinfeld fan and you saw that with Kenny Rogers, you know, roasted chicken Aaron and Jerry change rooms, he's on, no sleep, right? You know, well, that's what it's gonna be like.
So if...
It's already wired, it's a box, it's already wired for lighting.
So if we, if we approve this...
Excuse me?
If we approve this and we put a condition that has to be off by seven o'clock, 7:00 PM, would you have an objection to it?
I would not, I would, I'd be in favor of it.
So we'll put a condition on that and...
Okay.
If my other fellow board members agree.
But if there is a problem, I'm gonna be the complaton, I just let you know that.
No, that's fine.
That's fine, he just go right through.
Okay, if there's, is there a timer, fine, this is not out by the road, perpendicular to the road, that could be illuminated that way, this is a sign that's jetting out forward, okay?
Okay.
We got you.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thanks for coming. That's perfect. Seven o'clock.
All right, write that down so you can put that on the resolution for that inquiry. Also, I wanted to point out that, that our counselor was doing some research for us and we wanted to make sure that this was an area variance and not a use variance, so we wanna make that clear, that this is an area variance for the record. Thank you, counselor.
Hi.
Anybody else wanna go see the Titanic? Nobody else wants to go see the Titanic?
We're gonna go, we're gonna read the resolution in one minute. And then you can leave after you hear it, okay, you got it.
Like I said, anybody wanna go down to the Titanic? Stupid.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, anyone else to be heard on this matter? Last call, off we go. Anyone on Zoom to be heard on this? Okay, let's have a reading.
Okay, with respect to appeal number 2023-032, I move at the appeal of 1264 West Main Street LLC, located at 1264 West Main Street, Riverhead, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-120-2-2, riverfront corridor zoning, for variances and relief from chapter 301-254G3, internal sign illumination not be permitted. With the conditions that the sign must have a timer and is only illuminated during business hours open to the public and in no case later than 7:00 PM. Be granted in accordance with the applications and sketches with amendments thereto, if any, as filed with the building inspector.
Show move.
2nd.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zeweski.
Aye.
I vote aye, so I hope everybody's happy, thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, good night. Next up.
Appeal 2023-034 Paul W. and Jean Anne Sharp, 11 Oak Street, Jamesport, Suffolk County Tax Map Number 600-93-1-10, RB40 zoning, proposed reconstruction of detached garage with law. Applicant requests interpre tation of appeal of building inspectors, April 13th, 2023, selling from a denial letter for Oak Street, Jamesport, sorry, 11 Oak Street, Jamesport.
Okay, thank you. Please, just give them right to tracing. Pull the microphone to you, state your name, you're an attorney?
Sure, yes.
Good, fine, just state your name and your address.
Okay, Christopher Bianco of the law firm Egan and Goldit, 96 South Ocean Avenue, Patchogue, New York, for Paul and Jean Anne Sharp. So I represent Paul and Jean Anne Sharp on this appeal of the April 13th, 2023, building inspectors denial letter for 11 Oak Street, they reside on the adjacent property. I realize that this has been extensively discussed, at least the underlying appeal with regards to Mr. Bada's variance application, but today I'm here just for a very narrow issue with regards to that building inspector's letter. So the Sharfs live on 11 Bayside Avenue, directly adjacent to the Bada property. I know typically your board hears variance applications, but you do have the power under your section 105-8 of your town code to hear appeals of building inspector determinations. You have the power to modify and reverse them or affirm it. So tonight, again, we're just focusing on that, that letter and there's one important omission in that letter that we're addressing with regards to this appeal. In that April 13th letter, there's an omission there vis a vis the application, so Mr. Bada submitted an application in April of this year that was substantially the same as the application that he submitted in 2022. And I think as the board is aware, he applied for various variances for a garage structure that included living space and a bedroom and the board ultimately granted that application and it was the subject of an Article 78 proceeding and the board withdrew it and he then resubmitted that application, substantially the same application. This time around, in April of this year, the building inspector issued a letter that was almost identical to the one he issued in 2022 and one of the exhibits there is the two letters that you could compare side by side with one key omission and that was there's no reference to section 301-14 of the town code and no reference to language regarding that the upper levels in that accessory structure, proposed structure are not incidental to or customarily found in a single-family dwelling. And our argument is that the building inspector last year was correct in noting that the proposed use of the structure is not in keeping and not proper under the RB40 regulations. And at the very least, it would require a use variance. Now, what I'm gonna argue tonight is that even if you don't agree with me, at the very least, that building inspector's letter should be modified so that this board can review that issue and make a determination. You may think that it doesn't require a use variance, I believe it does, but at the very least, it's something that needs to be analyzed, it needs to be discussed and the board and the building inspector cannot put their head in the sand regarding an issue in which the town code provides no express affirmation or permission to turn an accessory structure into living space, habitable living space. There's no support in the town code for it. At the very least, if you believe there is and if you believe my interpretation is wrong, that's fine, but write on it. The board and the building inspector should not be putting their head in the sand on, on a very key and important issue. And my co-counsel, Bud Gaff news here, will discuss later also the policy implications of this, that if we don't, if this board and the building inspector don't draw lines as to what living space is, where it can be placed inside accessory structures, it's going to lead to more serious problems down the road. Before I get into the policy implications, I just wanna state the sections of the code where I think strongly supports our argument that accessory structures in the RB40 district cannot have living space. Now, living space under the state building code, that includes the space that you use to live and occupy residents, that includes bedrooms, kitchens, even recreation rooms, it does not include storage or closets or bathrooms.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
You just made reference to the code, is that language in the code?
Your town code incorporates the New York State Building Code.
So your argument is the town code incorporates the building code and therefore that language is deemed included in our town code?
The language with regards to habitable space, yes, and in this case, there's habitable space being placed in that garage, the proposed...
So your argument is that with respect to accessory structures in this zoning code that applies to this property, couple, habitable space is not permitted?
Is not permitted, we require a use variance. My argument would be that at the very least, this board has to review that issue. It was, it was made aware of the issue last year in the town, in the letter from the building inspector and now they're essentially, because your town code has no express language supporting that, so at the very least, it's an issue that the ZBA has to write on. But I would argue, yes, that you would require a use variance as it's written now and I'm gonna get into, there are obviously towns and villages that have permitted that, but they've gone ahead and amended their code to make it clear, to have a clear process by which you can apply, to have typically non-inhabitable, non-livable space turned and converted into livable space in accessory structures or in basements, but there's no process or existence of such language in your town code. And in fact, I think the language in your code with regards to its definition of single-family dwelling, its definition of accessory building, the section in which you use to calculate the minimum square footage in a single-family dwelling in the RB40 district, they all point to the notion that the habitable space on the property has to be in just the principal dwelling, principal meaning just one structure, not spread across different structures on the property. Your definition of single-family dwelling says a detached building designed for and occupied exclusively as a home or residence by not more than one family, again, just one detached building, not, it doesn't say livable space or a network of structures or multiple structures, it makes no reference to multiple structures housing the, the principal dwelling. Your definition of accessory building says that the, it's a building or structure or use customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building or use located on the same lot as such principal building. Again, it's referencing principal building, principal meaning one. One building which houses all your habitable space. It also talks of customarily incidental use, a garage with livable space, a garage with a bedroom, I would argue is not customarily incidental to a typical single-family dwelling. And I think it would be a rational argument that that's a typical arrangement. Subordinate, again, habitable space is not subordinate to residential use, habitable space is residential use, that's what it means. So again, I think those two definitions alone already point to the fact that living space has to be within just your principal structure. Your own definition of garage makes no mention of permitting living space. Section 301-16A, which discusses the minimum square footage you gotta have for a single-family dwelling in the RB40 district, it speaks of calculating the living space within the principal structure and it says you exclude non-living space within that structure. It doesn't say count the living space across all the structures on your property, it doesn't say count all the living space among all the areas, various areas in the property, again, it's one principal structure in which you have the space that exists. Your, your section 301-14 was actually amended in 2005 to include an attached single-family dwelling units within the cluster subdivision. Again, your town amended that section because it understood that the definition of single-family dwelling is so narrow, it's so narrowly tarred and so strictly defined that even a dwell, even a house that's attached to another house wouldn't count under your definition, that's how strict it is, because it's only allows one detached structure on a property. So your town recognized they had to amend the RB40 district regulations in 2005 in order for that to be a permitted use, in order for a structure to have, that had two dwelling units that were separate, single-family units, but that were attached, it wouldn't be permitted under that strict definition, that's how strict that definition is.
So is it your position for clarification that the request for the area variance was for a principal structure from a single-family dwelling and not an accessory structure?
It's an extension of a dwelling, it's an extension of a single-family dwelling use onto another structure. Is it a separate dwelling theoretically? Not necessarily if they put in, they don't put in a kitchen, but that doesn't matter, you can't have habitable living space, your code doesn't allow the habitable living space to be placed in other structures outside of the principal structure, that's my opinion.
That's your interpretation?
That's our interpretation, yeah. And, and again, I understand you're gonna have a different interpretation, our interpretation leads us to conclude that the bodies in their application would need a use variance, but I think at the very least, it is a gray area that requires both the building inspector and the board to review it, to review the code, the provisions, to analyze it and to write on it. I don't think leaving it out entirely out of the building inspector's referral letter and for the CPA not to address it is a good idea. And you don't want, I, in my view, I don't think the town wants to open itself up to people coming in to this board, being vague about the use of their proposed accessory structure, getting an approval and saying, oh, it's just an area variance, don't worry about the use, don't ask too many questions, it's gonna be storage slash, I don't know, TV room space, don't worry about it. And then 10 or 20 years down the line, that space becomes either a bedroom or rented space or even a separate dwelling in it. And you know what they're gonna say when they get ticketed, when you try to attempt to shut them down? They're gonna point to something in the record where they're gonna be able to say that, look, the building inspector, he didn't mind, he knew that there was gonna be some habitable space here, he didn't even mention it in his referral letter, the CPA didn't mind, they didn't care, they didn't even mention it in their decision. In this case, right now, the application, the 2023 application that Mr. Bada submitted on the building permit survey, it says, it describes the garage as one bedroom. Now, you think that 20 years from now, something may happen in that house, they, they may end up turning it into something else, who knows? And I'm not saying that Mr. Bada would, we don't know what the future holds, properties change hands, right? Now, in the end, they're gonna point to that, they're gonna say, they get ticketed and, and that's gonna be a defense that's gonna allow, look, town justice courts, supreme courts, they're slow in processing things, all you need is some gray area or some defense and you're gonna be able to survive a prosecution, right? They're gonna point to things in the record like that because it's, because the board's not delineating, they're not drawing clear lines as to what is permitted as far as habitable space. They're not drawing clear lines as to what the use is going to be in that, in that particular structure. The building inspector is kind of burying his hand in the sand, so to speak, I don't wanna be harsh, but that's the reality, when you, you don't write on it, when you don't even put it in your referral.
Seems like you have a lot of suggestions as far as what we should be doing and looking at.
Well, I, I represent other CBAs and I understand that.
That's just a comment.
Look, I understand it, I'm, I'm just pointing out, and this is all I ask, take that letter from 2022, use that language in the new letter, modify it. If you disagree with me, that's fine, write the decision and say that I'm foolish, that my interpretation makes no sense, but at the very least, just write on it, tell me why I'm wrong, why the use is not an issue. And in the end, this, and this is a serious issue, look, when it comes to putting livable space in accessory structures, two years ago, we had, you know, record rainfall the course of a couple days, people in New York City on Long Island in illegal structures, illegal basement apartments, a lot of people perished as a result of those illegal structures. When you don't draw lines, you make it easier for those to exist, I think, and frankly, you make the prosecution of going after those types of apartments harder. In the end, this is the kind of issue frankly, that the town board should address because it, you need a process, the town of Huntington right now is debating that right now as we speak. And it's not being debated before their ZBA or their planning board, they're drawing local laws and amending their zoning code to permit in certain circumstances, people to convert accessory structures and basements to living space, but you gotta meet certain standards and it's, it's not an easy process, but there's a recognition there that their zoning code wouldn't normally permit something like that. And again, I, I think it's a policy issue that in some ways is better left to town boards who can create regulations and help draw clear lines as to when habitable space can go inside accessory structures. And, and again, I just wanna emphasize, that's just the last point, no matter what you think of my arguments, ultimately, having... of my arguments, ultimately, having, this issue was already raised by the building inspector last year. Substantially, the same application's brought before you, it essentially says, "Living space will be placed there." And now we have a building inspector's letter that completely omits any reference to the use issue. If you disagree with me, that's fine, but I think that's something that should at least be looked at by the ZBA. Could I have Mr. Gaffney also come up just to speak for a few minutes on the policy applications as well?
Good evening, Counselor, just state your name and your address, please.
Robert Gaffney, 208 Tyler Court, Riverhead, New York. I'm here representing as co-counsel Mr. and Mrs. Scharf. Mr. Bianco mentioned lines, clear lines, and I think that's probably the most important message that we would want to give today. Historically, it's the role of the town board, the elected officials of the town, to make zoning law. And then it's the role of the zoning board of appeals to correct minor variances when there's a hardship to the land, not necessarily a hardship to a family who wants to be with their grandchildren, those are different kinds of hardships, and we don't deal with those. But the hardship to the land, now here you've got a situation where the town board has been very clear, or not perhaps as clear as we would like, about accessory structures. As Mr. Bianco pointed out, the law is fairly clear, but it could be clearer. That leaves some room perhaps for the zoning board of appeals to, but not the kind of, it leaves you some wiggle room, but not the kind of wiggle room that's being asked here. The request was for a significant and substantial extension, expansion of a pre-existing, non-conforming garage, a pre-existing use, a 14 by 20, or 20 by 20 garage with a 14-foot height. Now, the application that was made was for a significant extension of that. It was modified downward, understandably, but it's still going to be 20 feet high and possibly higher if it's built on a berm, which berm is really only necessary if it's going to be a dwelling. If it's not going to be a dwelling, there's no berm necessary. So it's a situation where, and I can understand why they would want to do it, but the family who owns the property would like to build another accessory dwelling on there. And they were very clear about that when they filed their original application. And then it was modified, I think it's supposed to be storage now, but there was no storage requested when it was a bedroom. Now it's not a bedroom, it's storage, but the building is still going to be 20 feet high, and it's two and a half feet off my client's property line. And not the back of his property line, but the center of his property line as it goes along. A 20 by 20 building front is not a pretty thing to look at necessarily. It's okay if you're on the other side of it, but that's part of the concern. So my role today here was to point out that the role of a town board, the elected officials, is to make zoning law. By granting the kinds of variances, by calling use variances area variances, you're creating new sets of town law, town law which later on has to be dealt with. And that's a problem. I mean, I live in the town of Riverhead, we all do. How many places have you seen that in violation of the town code? You say, "Well, the building inspectors can come over and they can resolve it." There aren't enough building inspectors. The thing is going to get out of control. If this is permitted, then every single house along the bay that has a garage where they want their children to come and spend the summer with them, it's going to turn into another residence. It's as simple as that. So those are my remarks. My concern is that municipal law does not permit this to happen in this particular matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
So can I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm sure you researched your client's property.
I have.
And what is your client's property in Bruce's?
A house and a garage.
And can you describe the garage?
Excuse me?
Can you describe the garage?
It's a single, a two-car garage. It's on the street line, it's about, oh, maybe 300 or 400 feet, maybe more, from their dwelling.
And what's the height of that garage?
21 feet. It's a peak of 21 feet. I think on the sides it's probably significantly less.
And did your clients ever apply for a variance related to the house or the garage?
I don't believe he's ever applied for a variance for the house.
How about the garage?
I believe there might have been a two-foot height variance. That's my understanding. Possibly more, I don't know. But the point is that this garage on the Bottas' property is two feet, two and a half feet from their property line. The Scharfs' garage is on the street line several hundred feet away. It's not up against anybody else's property line.
It's on the street line, Bob.
What?
It's like two feet from the street.
Yeah, yeah. The Scharf garage?
Right, right.
This is right on, the back of this garage is two feet from the Scharfs' property line.
Right, right.
You couldn't put a shed there.
So the current garage is two feet. So he just wants to maintain that line if he rebuilds his garage?
So he's going to put a 20-foot structure two feet from the other guy?
Right. Well, you know, it's no different than what Mr. Scharf did when he put his 21-foot structure on the front.
It's very different.
And he got a variance, by the way.
It's very different, because his-
But he got a variance.
Nobody objected to, and what is it next to? It's next to another garage. It's not next to somebody else's house.
Okay.
It's not a dwelling. It doesn't have water, it doesn't have a bathroom, it doesn't have bedrooms.
It has water.
Doesn't have water.
On the plans, it says-
Outside.
Okay, whatever.
It's a hose connection outside. No one lives in it.
Right.
No one asked for it to be a bedroom. No one wants anybody, no one lives in it, no one's ever lived in it.
He has stairs inside, so someday he can finish it upstairs. Why would he have such a large storage area?
He had a lot of stuff to store.
Okay.
But he never applied for a bedroom and then changed it to storage, and no one has been living in it.
Wait, wait, so is it utilized? Is there an area above utilized for storage in the garage?
Some, yeah. The main problem, of course, is that this is two feet from his property line. It was a garage, it's non-conforming, you know, it's a permissible use clearly, but the way it's configured, the new building, it would be 20-something feet high by 20-something feet wide, two feet from his, two and a half feet from his property line, and right away, just down from his house. That's the kind of, that's not in anybody's book a de minimis variation.
Excuse me, but that's where it sits right now, the two and a half feet, is that right?
Right, but it's 14 feet high at a peak and about eight feet on either side, and it's covered by trees, which would have to come down, obviously, if they built a 20-foot, a 20 by 20 wall against the side of his property.
And that's your client's backyard, that the garage is in?
It's his side yard.
Right?
It's his side yard.
Side yard.
Yeah.
But it's still the backyard, really. I mean, he's looking, I'm sure they're all sitting out there at night looking at the garage instead of looking at the van in the front.
No, but the family goes, "I'm here because he's a friend, otherwise I wouldn't be here." And I believe what he, I believe his case is right. And the fact is that I've been there for social gatherings where you're not on the water, but you're back there. Now you've got a 20 by 20-foot wall right where his backyard is. And it's not a question of, "Does he have enough property? He's got other places to go, he can be in the front." The law doesn't work that way. He's asking for a significant, a very, very, the applicant, a very, very significant area variance, area variance, which is really disguising, in my view, a use variance. I mean, I think that's pretty clear from the fact that there was a, that the initial applicant, building applicant, had a bedroom up there with water service and, you know, a bathroom. Does anybody in there really think that that's not going to be a guest house? Oh, okay.
Well, he was describing it as his children staying there.
Right.
But who knows in the future, right?
Well, yeah, but immediate family staying in a separate facility creates, it's a guest house.
I guess, if there's no kitchen, I wouldn't call it a house. He's not proposing a kitchen.
Well, the law does.
Anyway, he's going from, I think, 400 square feet to 540 square feet. That's not a very big structure. Height-wise, I can understand it's 21 feet, just like your client's garage is 21 feet.
But they talked about putting a berm in, right? It had to go higher because of the berm?
I'm not exactly sure what the engineering part is. I wish they were here tonight so we could ask them, but they're not here.
I think he is, no?
No, the Bottas are not here.
Okay.
Well, they're here, they're right there.
Oh, who is that back there? Is that Mr. Bottas?
Yes.
Oh, I can't see you. I see you now, though. All right, come on up.
Well, I thought we were just talking about the-
The letter.
Mr. Bottas, you've been sworn in before, just state your name and your address.
No, you have to swear.
Again, different, right, I'm sorry. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
Christopher Bottas, 271 South Franklin Turnpike, Ramsey, New Jersey. I know we're here just on the narrow, B-O-T-T-A. We're here on the narrow interpretation of the letter, the denial letter. And I think it's a very interesting discussion that they've had, but they need to look at the code, in my opinion. Section 105 of your code allows residential use in an accessory structure in the R40 zone. I'll quote it to you, and it actually, policy purposes of it. This was a law passed by the town code, which was requested to be done. This is from 2008. It is the intent and purpose of this article to allow accessory apartments within certain zones, including residents RB40, under certain conditions. And that's why there's no use variance required. The town of Riverhead made this determination in 2008. It's in the code. I don't know if they missed it, or didn't look at it, or didn't bother to look at it, but, I mean, just a little legal research would show you that it is allowed. I didn't come in looking for an accessory structure. I know a lot of applications have come in, accessory apartment, excuse me.
Yes.
But an accessory apartment is allowed under certain conditions, as you know.
So if the building permit was granted to you, the way I understand the accessory apartment law, if the building permit was granted to you and the variance was granted, you would have to wait three years.
In order to-
Unless you have a CO already on the structure and it's an alteration, or is it a knock-down and rebuild, and that's up to the building inspector to decide that one.
Well, I would have to wait three years to register it as an accessory apartment to rent it out for housing.
And then you can install your kitchens?
If I wanted to.
Right.
Just like the people on Center Street did, got approval, just like the people on Bayside Avenue did this year. So, you know, there's certain conditions allowed under the town purpose. And I will tell you that the town board didn't take this lightly, because they looked into it and they talked about policy reasons as to why accessory apartments were needed for, let's just see here. "The town board finds that there exist many benefits associated with the creation of accessory apartments on residential lots with existing detached, single-family dwellings, including cost-effective means of accommodating necessary residents of development, by making better use of existing infrastructure, reducing the need for new infrastructure, increasing supply of housing, benefiting older homeowners, single parents, young home buyers, disabled, integrating worst-case housing, providing homeowners with revenue to meet rising homeownership costs, and by measuring, meeting growth management goals by creating more housing opportunities within developed neighborhoods. Also, it allows the town inspectors to better properly monitor accessory apartments so that tragedies don't happen," as quoted by the counsel here, "so that people don't die in fires, so that people don't die in drought, because accessory apartments are registered with the town." And it's really right here in the code. I just flabbergasted that it's just not even discussed by counsel. In any event, I have no intention of getting an accessory apartment, but what that ordinance says is that residential use is allowed in an accessory structure. Therefore, you do not need a use variance in order to put habitable space. Even if I never put anybody up there, even if I put up lawn mowers, whatever else, ladders up there, it's habitable space. They have habitable space in their garage, even though they haven't registered it as an accessory apartment. I don't know if they will someday, 10, 20 years down the line, some other family member takes over the building, you know? They could do that, and they have every right to, just like every other application that's come before you this year has asked for anything like that. Now, accessory apartments have certain conditions, and they do, and they have to be met in order so that it can be enforced. But the bottom line is that that ordinance provides that residential use is permitted in an accessory structure in the R40 or the B40 zone. That's the bottom line. And I know we're here just on this narrow issue of the interpretation of the denial letter, and why doesn't it include the use variance? Well, that's the reason. And that's really all I need to say. If you want to ask me anything about my application, I certainly am here to answer any questions for you or for counsel's information.
Well, that's good for now, please now.
Thanks.
If you kindly raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Yes, sir.
Kindly state your name and your address.
Andreas Sofoklis, 49 Blossom Avenue, Holtsville, New York, 11742. It's a doozy, S is in Sam, O, F is in Frank, O, K, L, I, S is in Sam. Yep. So I'll let you ask questions before, and then I'll, you know, if the chance allows, I'll speak freely for a moment.
We're here on.
Okay, yes, dear. Your title is?
Senior Building Inspector.
Qualifications?
I'm a New York State Certified Code Enforcement Official. I'm a lead AP, and I've been a building code official for nearly 22 years now.
Good, thank you.
How long have you worked for the town of Riverhead?
Just over three years.
And where did you work prior to that?
Town of Huntington for almost 15 years, Town of Smithtown for about three years, the Village of Mutton Town, and I was a building official for the National University Medical Center.
So in all of those previous positions, did you serve in a similar capacity as you do now for the town of Riverhead?
Yes, different title, but same capacity, building code official. I'd like to, maybe I'll hand these up.
So you issued a determination on this matter, correct?
So the first denial letter I did issue with the habitable, not habitable space, I'm sorry, upper-level concern, as you brought up, my head was never in the sand. The case went to the zoning board, was very carefully spoken about, and a determination with a lot of conditions was granted. That was appealed or taken back, and there was questions about it. That caused a lot of research to be done, and after meetings and research with administration, it was actually determined that in the town of Riverhead, two-story accessory structures are in fact incidental to and customarily found because they're everywhere since the beginning of time, or prior to 65, let's say. So that's how we changed that determination. Now, whether there's an accessory structure code change in the future, that's potential, but right now, the code is silent on the matter as far as is concerned, so that's why the determination was changed.
So when you say you spoke to the administration, can you clarify that so we understand what that means?
Well, in other words, after this case came to light-
What is the hierarchy of your department, how is it set up? What constitutes the administration?
Well, administration above me, I've spoken with town, you know, town attorney's office on the matter, we've all discussed it as different concerns, probably based on the Bottas case, because of the situation that arose from it after the approval, which was very strict and had a lot of conditions on it. So after that approval, then the appeal came, then we started discussing it, and noted that they have been approved in past building inspectors since 65 and prior to 65, there's also lots of two-story- in past building inspectors since 65, and, and prior to 65, there's also lots of two-story accessory structures. And as Mr. Bott brought up, the chapter 105, which I have here, does specifically permit space in accessory structures. And there's nowhere that says it can't be, so that is why the determination was changed.
So, I was just going to ask you the question. Is there a provision in the town code, the town of Riverhead, that prohibits either second stories for garage structures and/or use of space in an accessory structure for habitable space?
There does not, and I'll bring this up into the, you know, for you guys to have.
Do you have two copies so the other side can be provided with a copy?
I'm sorry.
Is this just a duplicate?
Yes, yes, these are just copies, I mean, I'll explain it, what it is. This is the Table of Dimensional Regulations for today's zoning.
Do you have a copy for that?
Okay. So, on the first page of this, this is the Table of Dimensional Regulations for today's zoning. And you can see I've highlighted RB40 with a height restriction of 35 feet. And then an accessory structure at the end just gives setbacks, nothing to mention height, so...
What's that?
In an accessory structure, it is 20, 20 and 50, however, this is a pre-existing structure that was already there. So if you go to chapter, which I don't have here, but if we go to chapter 301, 222, the pre-existing non-performing use may exist as long as the setbacks don't decrease, or get less. And that's part of the case here. It was not getting less, but it was getting smaller.
Hold on, counsel, if you want to give him up, if you want to say, you can question him afterwards.
Yeah, let me, let me finish going through this real quick. So then on the next page, we have the pre, previous zoning, the Table of Dimensional Regulations from prior to 2004. And then we have the RB40 accessory structure. You'll note on the front of that, it says accessory uses shall include those customarily incidental to any of the above permitted uses, or specially permitted uses, when located on the same lot. So, again, it doesn't specifically say you cannot have habitable space. It does in fact, in chapter 105, say you can, therefore, that is part of the reason why it was taken out of the second denial letter. Then we go on, we have the town code definition of accessory building or structure, which you can see there. Town code definitions of story, story area of, and story half, which, again, nothing really gives me anything to say I should be denying it for habitable space, so this is why this has been put together. Then I, after that, I have the old residency zoning district for accessory structures. Again, not saying that you cannot have habitable space. And then we have the definition state code of habitable space in there. And again, just going to the first granted decision on this case was very strict and had a lot of provisions on it. And then when that was appealed, it caused the town as a whole to look at all the different accessory structures that were previously through since well before I received it. And that caused me to change my interpretation to say, in fact, they are incidental to a customer of the family. And I do have some draft code to change the code, but right now that's irrelevant, so...
So, just going back with your employment history, you stated prior to your employment at the town, you worked for it, town of...
Mm-hmm.
Smithtown.
Smithtown. Any other towns?
The Village of Mutton Town, I did a stint for...
So, saying in your employment, did you interpret and enforce their codes?
Yes.
Did any of those tabs have provisions in their codes restricting or prohibiting dimensions, uses of accessory structures?
Yes, the Huntington Town Code, as this gentleman said, they're changing now, but they did have very strict, or very delineated provisions for habitable space in accessory structures. We do not, it's something we can talk about in the future, but right now, for this case, it's an irrelevant point. And again, that was part of the reason why the denial letter was revised. But to say that the zoning board or myself had our head in the sand, we looked at the case very carefully on the first go-around, so that confused me a lot. I have both denial letters here, and that's my, my take on it.
Okay. Counsel, you have anything?
Reconstructing a garage that's 20 by 20 with a 14-foot peaked roof into a flat roof 20 by 20 as it faces my client's property is a far cry from just reconstructing an existing facility. It's a garage. It's now being turned into something different than a garage. Whether it turns into a residence, or whether it turns into a storage area, it's still, it's still a 20-foot structure, 20 by 20 foot structure, at the least, two and a half feet from the midpoint of my client's property lot. Now, if someone was going to be, and, and the purpose of zoning boards of appeal basically is to, to fill in the gray areas between what's permitted, what's not permitted, if there's a minor, you know, differential, usually it's de minimis. This is in no way de minimis. There's, there's a, there's a series of different setback requirements that are being varied. It's a whole series of different things. But the one that, that affects my client the most is the possibility that there would be a 20 by 20-foot wall built two and a half feet from the midpoint of their lot that didn't currently exist. Now, you could argue that, that diminishes the value of my client's property, it certainly... The question would be, would he have bought it if he knew that was going to happen? Who can tell? Would somebody else buy it? Who could tell? How much would it be let, worth, how much less would it be worth? No way to know that. But the point is that, that if you look at a, at a two and a half foot line, and then a 20 by 20 flat roof structure, whether it's a storage, whether it's a bedroom, the board is being asked to vary that dramatically, and to, and to dramatically change the character of my client's property. And it's not the only variance that was being, is being sought. Now, it was a narrow purpose today, and I, I grant you that, and I, and I certainly appreciate your forbearance as we, we talked, because really, this is what we had to talk about. But let me just leave that with you. This is no de minimis or minor variance that we're talking about. This is creating a dramatic change and a hardship for my client, building a structure that was relatively small into something that's significantly larger. And that creates issues, and that creates a problem, you know, for them.
Would you agree these issues that you're raising are germane to the area variance, which is currently stayed, rather than your client's application regarding the building permit denial?
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the question.
So we're here regarding the denial issued by the chief building inspector?
Yes, and that's why I thanked the board for their, for their forbearance to hear me.
Correct. But the issues that you're raising and the impact to your clients that you're discussing now relate to the application for a variance that's currently stayed pending a determination?
Correct.
Okay, good, I just wanted... I apologize, I didn't say it.
That was a better explanation.
That's correct. And I thank you for your time.
So Bob, just to point out that your client is opposed to adding seven feet to the height, and is opposed to adding eight feet to the length of the building. That's really what it comes down to, it's not...
No, he's not, no. He's, he's opposed to taking a building that now is virtually invisible from his property line, and turning it into a, what will look like a warehouse from a 20 by 20 foot structure.
It's actually bigger.
Huh?
It's bigger.
Oh, bigger than that, oh. You make my point, it's bigger than that.
It's, it's, it's 28 feet long.
And it's, and it's not permitted under current zoning law, it requires a variance.
Right.
It requires you folks to say, no, this is okay.
Okay.
And, and I'm suggesting that it's not okay.
So, you know, your client also had a knockdown and rebuild on his house, so...
He did, and he got no variances to do it.
He didn't need a variance?
No.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
You're positive?
Uh, I said he did no variance, right?
He did require a variance for the house.
And did anybody object to it?
I wasn't there.
I mean...
I don't know. All I know is that he went for a variance and built the house.
I, I believe he did not need a variance for the, for the house.
I don't, I...
He built within the, he built within the footprint.
Okay.
He did, however, require a variance for the garage.
Yes, he did.
But the garage is, the garage is not midpoint between any neighbor's house. It's not, it's, it's not built right along a property line. I mean, if that wasn't a pre-existing structure, you couldn't, you could never do that.
Well, okay.
You couldn't, you, you could put a swing set there, but you couldn't put a shed that close. And here you're putting a 20, in excess of 20-foot structure in height and width, 20 feet, right up against his property line. And anybody think that's okay doesn't own the property next to it.
Okay.
And, and it, it's totally within your discretion to do it. Well, I, I mean, let me rephrase that. That's the point of the Article 78, it's not totally within your discretion.
Well, we don't have a 78 yet.
Well...
I'm quite sure it's going.
This is all part of the record.
All right. Let's get ahead of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Please.
Sure. So, you know, with all due respect to the building inspector's letter, the section he cites in that original letter was 301-14, which is the uses within the district. It's not just an issue of it having been two stories and wondering whether it was permissible to have two-story accessory structures or two-story garages. The original letter, when you're reading it, is even using the language that deals with accessory uses, the incidental support language. I think there's a post-ocrasse rationalization here. I think ultimately, the question at hand in the original letter is that this was not the type of use that's typical for an accessory garage, and it was an issue that had to be addressed by the CBA. And I believe it's an issue that should be addressed again on the underlying application here, on the 2023 application. And I think ultimately, the board, in their 2022 decision, while they addressed the area variances and discussed them, the 301-14 issue that was raised in that building inspector's letter was really not broached. It was not discussed in that decision, and now it's been admitted entirely in the letters. I mean, that's our view, and I think it has to be addressed. The question of accessory, the chap, what, chapter 105, there's no application here to accessory board, there's no chap, application made under chapter 105. That's not the issue here at present. It has nothing to do with the application of appeal that's here. Finally, I know that there's been some discussion of the area variance under the other application. I ask that the record here today also, if we could introduce that into the record for the underlying proceeding for the area variance as well, since they're related, just the materials they submitted here, if they can also be exhibits to the, the other...
Sure, we'll leave it open for correspondence.
So you'll have to read that application at the time that matter is, is currently stayed, so...
Yeah, I just, you know, I was almost thinking in the back of my mind, I knew it wasn't on the agenda, but I didn't want you guys to close it today, and then not being, not being able to submit what I submitted today for that here. So I just want to make sure I have time.
I mean, I, I think I've always been responsive.
No, I know. Absolutely. No, I understand, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Yes. Ms. Heather, would you, excuse me?
Yeah, would you be able to swear me in?
Okay, raise your right hand, please, Phil. You saw, we're to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Please state your name and address, please.
For the record, Heather Trojanowski, 78 16th Street in Wading River, New York, 11792. My current title for the town of Riverhead is site plan reviewer, but I was previously a building permits examiner, and I started working for the town in November of 2018.
And can you give us a brief description of your certification, experience, responsibilities of the two different titles that you tell me to take?
Sure, so I'm actually also a New York State Certified Code Enforcement Official. I went and got that certification. I am on building inspector civil service list, but in my, when I was a building permits examiner, I reviewed permit applications, checked to see if setbacks were met, you know, went through the list, checked for proper liability, workers' comp disability insurances, made sure we had the correct set of plans. If something needed a variance, whether it was an area variance or a use variance, I would make usually a note. It would go to the, you know, at the time, Brad Hammond was the chief building inspector, so it would go to him. He would issue the denial letter based on the appropriate section of code. Last year, I switched over to being a site plan reviewer, so I've gone more into the zoning and planning portion of my job duties. But I do, you know, look at the code, I interpret the code, especially with uses on commercial properties. I review subdivision and site plan applications, and I also assist with the zoning board of appeals matters.
Do you work with Andreas?
I do. Building and planning are actually in the same building, along with the fire marshal.
What have you to offer?
So just to sort of dovetail into what Andreas was saying about the upper levels in accessory structures, and although his denial letter, it said 301-14, the specific language was upper levels in accessory structures. It didn't specify habitable or not habitable space. And our definition of accessory building structure or use, again, all three, building, structure, or use, so customarily incidental and subordinate to the principal building. So accessory structure, meaning the building, which is also defined in our code, is customarily incidental and subordinate to. So his denial letter initially only referenced upper levels. Based on prior applications and COs, which I have a list of here, I only went back to, I think, about 1989 in the immediate area of the subject parcel. So we have 7 Lagoon Court in Aquabog. The construction was a two-story, three-car detached garage with a roofed over porch. No variances were required, and the height of the structure was 23 feet 2 inches. The date of the CO was December 13th of 1989.
I'm just going to ask, can you do a sound check? It feels like the microphone's dropped, and I want to make sure that I can...
Just move the microphone, see if you talk to it.
I can try to speak a little bit louder, is that better?
We lost some connection.
Yeah. We're missing the sound.
She's not coming through on the sound.
I'll just try to project a little bit more, if that helps, and enunciate. So the second property I have on my list is 56 Morningside Avenue in South Jamesport. They demolished and rebuilt a two-car detached garage with a deck and storage above. The height was not shown, but there was clearly a second story on the plans. They did need an area variance, which was granted by Appeal 93-9, for the garage in the front yard, front and side yard setbacks, but not for the upper level in the detached structure. The date of the CO on that property was July 15th of 1994. I'm just going to skip through a couple, because I have two sheets of this. So I'll go down to 85 Locket Drive, which is also in Jamesport. They demolished and rebuilt a detached garage with a second floor. They specified that it was for storage. The height of the structure was 21 feet 2 inches. No variances were required, and the CO was issued on July 20th of 2007. 46 Bayside Avenue, two-story, two-car detached garage with first floor dressing rooms and a second floor for storage. Again, they denoted that the second floor was for storage on their plans, not all other people denoting. Not all other people denoted that. The height of the structure was 20 feet, and they did go for an area variance for side street and rear yard setbacks in addition to impervious surface coverage, and it was granted with no conditions. The CO was issued November 18th of 2009. And one of the more recent ones that was done, 20 Side Bayside Avenue in Jamesport. This was an interesting case. It was a first-floor alteration and a second floor in addition to an existing garage. And it was specifically for the conversion of the detached garage into a guest cottage. And it was granted by Appeal number 0749 with conditions that they need health department approval and that it was to be used for friends and family only and not to be rented or an accessory apartment. But that particular application was asking for the conversion of the garage to a guest cottage.
So you said you have approximately...
She was getting a little bit here with the volume that all consumed.
You were trying to fix that.
Yeah, I think I have 10 or 11 properties on this alone, but this is just in the immediate vicinity of the subject parcel. There are probably numerous properties over the years that have gotten building permits and corresponding COs for upper levels in accessory structures.
I'm sorry, I missed take this for the record. I gave the phone cell because we got the audio.
Yeah, it's much louder now.
So I'm sorry I was getting distracted because I could hear a little feedback. So, in the vicinity, and based on this research, I mean, they approximately, how many...
10 or 11 properties, based on, and I mean, I didn't look at every single parcel, so.
So, can you tell me, did any of those properties include 11 Oak Street, Jamesport?
11 Oak Street? No.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Yeah, I didn't read through all of them. Did the board have any specific questions? You know, I provided that just to show that there is a record for detached accessory structures with upper levels that were incidental to. So again, the specific language in the denial letter says upper levels. It doesn't designate habitable space or conditioned space or unfinished space. You know, whether or not it is the intent of the property owner, what they want to do with that. As counsel for the Sharps said, bathrooms are not considered habitable space. So should they choose to put a bathroom in the detached structure and have the upstairs used for unfinished storage, I would say that only the area variances would be required in this case.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you.
Yes, I have some questions.
Hold on now. Who we got here?
Mike, have you been sworn in before? No, we have to swear.
Hold on, Mike, hold on. Right, no, I got you, I got you. Okay, Mike, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Mike Sharp, 15 Third Avenue, Port Washington.
Okay, what do you got?
Yeah, I just was listening to some of this, and it was just, the volume cut off for a little bit, so forgive me if this is already answered. But in some of the examples that were just presented, like 56 Morningside Drive and whatnot, obviously there weren't bathrooms in there. This is obviously from a hearing from last year where the intent was clearly that this would be used as recreational habitable living space. Now, the building inspector letter from last year obviously had this variance that it's now missing. What I'm trying, what I'm having a hard time understanding is why this time around, when the plans are the same and the bathroom is the same and the dimensions are the same, actually have been increased height in the roof, why now all of a sudden this variance is no longer applicable when from that hearing, clearly intended that this was going to be habitable living space? And so that certainly begs the question, as well as all of the application last year, which even for the application this year, I believe that it was still flagged as bedroom on the survey. So I just don't quite understand the rationale for not at least flagging that variance as a consideration for the board to judge and weigh in upon how they see.
Thanks.
Is anybody else?
You made a statement.
Anyone else to be heard? Dan B., do you have anything to add to this? Hello?
No, I do not. No questions here.
No questions there.
Anyone else?
Anyone else to be heard in this matter? All right, let's close the discussion. Yeah, I'm just, anybody else have anything else to say?
Now you left it open.
Now you're getting it closed out.
Yes, just to close out this. And counsel's, you know, comments went way afar from what this application was here. And I think the board attorney definitely pointed that out. We're here about the interpretation that was very squarely put out by the two officials at the borough of the township. And, you know, any comments about area variance and 20-foot walls, it's totally irrelevant to your determination tonight. But, you know, that'll be addressed at another time when I get my application back if the board is so inclined to decline or deny this interpretation brought by the Sharps. So I just want to put on the record that, you know, half of the things said by counsel are irrelevant to what's being determined tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Boden. All right, nobody else to be heard in this matter, let's...
Sorry, one last question that I would just ask those four to ask Mr. Bottas since he's here. Is Mr. Bottas...
Excuse me, you have to wait one second.
Oh, whoa, whoa. Hold on a second, a second. Go ahead. What is he?
It was the same gentleman, Mike Sharp, that was talking just a few minutes ago.
What does he want?
Okay, go ahead.
My question is, since Chris Bottas is here, would this be the appropriate time to ask, since we're all weighing in on this, his intention for a second floor, if it remains the same as habitable space? Would that be the rational thing to do here?
No.
Okay.
All right. Have you been sworn in? Oh, no. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name and your address.
Robert Seery, 17 Bayside Avenue, Jamesport, New York. S-E-E-R-Y. So I'm not going to say much. I just want to repeat that's been said before in previous hearings. I don't know if it gets said, it needs to be heard again. We are on the property on the north side of the Bottas. We discussed the Sharps garage, which is, the property is twice the size. It's our house and the Bottas' house put together. Their garage is on the street, so we are in the middle of that property. So we are halfway between the Bottas' house and the street. That garage is going to squeeze in between the Bottas' house and our house. On a property line, 20-plus-feet structure. We discussed the wall. It's exactly what it is. It's going to block our views from our backyard, breezes and everything else. So whether this has to do with this variance or how this works, I just want to be on the record, we are still against it. And discussing this wall that's going to be, we are going to be the ones probably affected the most by this. Because there is a wall going up that's going to block our water views, our breezes. You know, it's a wall that's going up. So however you want to say it, that's what's going to be there.
So I just want to be clear. The scope of this CBA matter pending relates strictly to the zoning officer's determination.
Okay.
The variance matter has been stayed pending a determination on this action. So the issues you're raising are related to the state area variance.
Understood. I just want to make my point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if nobody else has anything else to say, we're going to close this matter, and we'll have a reserved decision at the next meeting, which should be July...
13.
13. July 13th, do we hear a motion?
You're going to want to write that one.
So moved, Mr. Kevin.
Mr. Barnes.
Aye.
Mr. Whitmire.
Aye.
Mrs. Zewski.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So you see you folks on the 21st, we will have a reserved decision. Back to you. All right. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting?
So may.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Kevin.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, everyone.
Heather, thank you.
Thanks, Heather. Way past your bedtime.